I'm putting somewhere, I don't know where I put my water at. I brought it, I was turning it up. Didn't put it in here.
These can be made for the agenda forty-eight hours.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, I guess we may have to. You say. Yeah. So try January.
Don't go down the agenda. Or go down until you get to the amendment, which is the, um.
What's that?
Alert.
Something to do in France, a whole month.
After the regulations, he's only due to.
Let's go, let's go.
Well, there's a lot of.
It's an important department, it's not. I think you're gonna like it better in parts.
You did it.
Part.
She gave me luck.
Yes.
Good morning, we now call this council meeting to order. If you have a cellphone, if you'd be so kind as to, at this time, put it on silent, mute, or off, be greatly appreciated. This time, we'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
O God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness, and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Present.
Roots.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of minutes.
So move.
Madam Clerk.
Resolution. No.
Approval of minutes. So move, she's second, so we'll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Mayor, prior to proceeding with public comment, we should amend the agenda so public comment can be made on that amendment.
Um, Mr. Solicitor and members of council, mayor, I make a motion to amend the current agenda to add Resolution eleven, uh, which is authorized approval for the adoption of a citywide deteriorated boundary, so making a motion to amend the agenda.
And the purpose of that amendment is because there was a hearing this morning to determine the boundaries, and it could not have been put on the agenda twenty-four hours in advance. And it will be posted on the agenda tomorrow.
It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. At this time, we open up the microphone for public comments on agenda items only. If you have public comments, we ask that you would go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your public comment. There is a sign-in sheet for those who would like to make public comments at the podium. And we ask that if you were going to make your comments, please sign in. Hearing is seen none. Madam Clerk.
Resolution. Whereas, the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Levada E. Dragons, two hundred West Second Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. Number two, Alvin Herring, two oh nine Patterson Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. Number three, Doris Holmes, six fourteen Highland Avenue, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. Number four, Todd Holmes, three oh two four West Twelfth Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. Number five, Juanita Miller, twenty-four eighteen Lindsay Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. And number six, Denise Parker Foster, eleven twenty-one West Eighth Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. Whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined, the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the two hundred block of West Second Street, in the two hundred block of Patterson Street, in the six hundred block of Highland Avenue, in the three thousand block of West Twelfth Street, in the twenty-four hundred block of Lindsay Street, and in the eleven hundred block of West Eighth Street in the City of Chester.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the promotion of John Paul Shirley from the position of Battalion Chief to the position of Deputy Chief, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and with a thirty-day probationary period at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
I'm concerned because, uh, Mr. Shirley only has, I was hoping that he had, uh, fifty-one certifications and qualifications. He only has fifty. Having said that, yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the promotion of Michael Gaffney from the position of firefighter to the position of captain, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with a ninety-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of the following individuals to the position of apprentice firefighter, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range as provided for first-year apprentice in accordance with the contract between the City of Chester and International Association of Firefighters Local fourteen hundred. I apologize in advance if I don't say your name correctly, okay? Joshua Mason, Joseph Hall, April Zavilio, Phoenix Murray, Ryan Back, Christopher Zuccarelli, Zachary Felker, Kenneth Baker, Mark Randolph, Eric Talberg. Further, said individuals are required to reside in the City of Chester for the first five years of their employment. Any firefighter not residing in the City of Chester must do so within three months of their date of hire as a permanent employee, and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes, and while saying yes, I would like to say this. There was a conversation, um, with some legal persons, and the receiver and his team about nepotism here in the City of Chester. I believe this is nepotism at its very best. When firefighters and police officers encourage their family members to follow suit and to do the very best they can do to help protect and serve in a community, I think it's a great thing. And so continue. Continue doing what you're doing, and continuing to encourage family members to be the very best they could be at what you do every day. Yes, madam clerk.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of the following individual to the position of police cadet, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-three, at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars per hour on a per diem basis, not to exceed eight hours per day, six days per week, with no benefits. Number one, Marlin Jones. Further, said police cadet shall attend the Delaware County Community College Academy to receive the required police certification and successfully complete all other pre-employment requirements.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester hired Shanae Hill for the full-time Finance Department of Counts, Finance and Human Resources, effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for thirty-seven point five hours per week with no benefits and a ninety-day probationary period. And whereas, said employment is contended upon said individual successfully completing ninety days probation from the date of hire. And whereas, the city is required by law to offer said employee medical benefits after sixty consecutive days, after sixty consecutive days of employment, which is completed on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. Further, if said employee fails to meet the job expectations within the ninety days probation, said employee will no longer be eligible for the position and will be subject to termination from said position.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, Chester City Council approved the land development of a one hundred and five thousand fifty-two square foot warehouse with office space for FMMQZOB LLC. Predecessor in interest to Alliance Fourth and Booth LLC at Fourth and Booth Streets, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. And whereas, said plans were not recorded within ninety days of municipal approval. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with recommendation of the Chester City Planning Commission dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, it does hereby grant final approval for Fourth and Booth LLC to develop three hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty square foot, square feet with a one hundred thousand sixty-eight square feet distribution warehouse to be located at Fourth and Booth Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three, as shown on a plan prepared by Lynn Architects, eleven forty North Providence Road, Media, PA, one nine oh six three, dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, last revised January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the temporary easement for construction for the property located at five thirty-four Lloyd Street to allow for the improvement and construction of one hundred and twenty-two square feet of the aforementioned property for an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars for the Lloyd Street Bridge project. Further, it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute the temporary easement for construction for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Further, said project is contingent upon final approval from city solicitors.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO for the installation of six hundred and ninety feet of new electrical lines within the City of Chester at the following locations. Number one, West Front Street from Edwards to Central. Number two, West Front Street from Norris Street to a point three hundred and thirty-six feet west of Norris. Further, said permit is contingent upon PICO's compliance with all, with all the conditions outlined by the city engineer and performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council, specifically the following. Number one, PICO performs a half-meal and overlay on all road openings exceeding one hundred feet or three patches within one hundred feet. Number two, PICO provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continual operation of city streets. Number three, PICO obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as any other required permits.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester intends to submit an application for fiscal year twenty twenty-three funding under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD's Community Development Block Rent, CDBG, program, and home investment partnerships. The home program. And whereas, one of the requirements of these programs is to inform the citizens of the City of Chester regarding the city's intended uses for the funds requested from HUD under the CDBG and home programs. And whereas, the City of Chester is required to prepare a draft of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, CDBG, and home action plan, which identifies the projects and program activities on which the program year twenty twenty-three, CDBG, and home funds are proposed to be spent. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Chester Economic Development Authority, CETA, to take the appropriate steps to ensure the requirements for the action plan preparation and public notification are met, and to advertise the availability of the draft FY twenty twenty-three, CDBG, home action plan in accordance with the appropriate federal regulation.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby adopt the twenty twenty Chester City Census Tracks as the boundaries of the deteriorated area or areas in accordance with the recommendations at the hearing held January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three for the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Law, LERTA, and Improvement of Deteriorating Real Property or Areas Tax Exemption Act, IDRPA, programs.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Power Home Remodeling Group is interested in acquiring and developing a property for a training and material supply center to consolidate its regional activities within the City of Chester. Whereas, the reference property is known as seven forty-two Front Street and is generally bound by York Street, West Second Street, Curlin Street, and West Front Street. Whereas, the Chester Economic Development Authority is seeking to have this property returned to productive use and provide employment opportunities in accordance with the city's economic development efforts. Further, in order for the effective redevelopment of the parcel, Power Home Remodeling Group is requesting conditional approval to vacate the following city right-of-way as per the attached exhibit. Number one, Cherry Street from York Street to Remy's Lane. Number two, Remy's Lane from Cherry Street to West Second Street. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that conditional approval is granted for the vacation of the above-described streets contingent on the following. Number one, the applicant obtains land development approval from the city, which includes any and all zoning relief necessary for the development. Number two, the applicant meets city and statutory requirements for the proper vacation of streets, including obtaining site control of adjacent properties or permission from adjacent property owners to vacate. Number three, applicant provides a legal description, description for the ROW vacation. Number four, applicant obtains required approvals from any and all existing utilities that may be using the ROW.
Um, so move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance, and as shown on expenditure approval list dated December seventeen, twenty twenty-two, through January fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, attached hereto and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
No.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number one, on its first reading, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester enacted pursuant to the improvement of deteriorating real property or areas Tax Exemption Act, IDRPA, authorizing tax exemptions from property tax for certain deteriorated residential property, defining eligible deteriorated residential areas, setting a maximum exemption amount, and an exemption schedule, and providing a procedure for securing an exemption.
I move that we pass bill number one on its first reading.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number two, on its first reading, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester enacted pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Law, LERTA, authorizing tax exemptions from property tax for certain deteriorated industrial, commercial, or other business property, defining eligible deteriorated areas, setting a maximum exemption amount, and an exemption schedule, and providing a procedure for securing an exemption.
I move that we pass bill number two on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carter, Ms. King.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Pennsylvania Health Department reported one hundred and nineteen positive COVID-nineteen cases in Chester in the month of January. Research experts believe that the number of positive cases is undercounted given the common use of at-home tests. The CDC states that people in Delaware County may choose to mask at any time due to the medium level of COVID-nineteen transmission. Um, and you can also go to vaccines.gov for the most up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. COVID-nineteen is still around, so if you haven't already, we encourage everyone to consider getting a vaccine and a booster shot. There is a vaccine booster and flu shot clinic today from eleven to one in the computer room. Widener Nursing Students will provide blood pressure screenings at City Hall once a week by the end of this month. On February twenty-first, the Fire Department will be providing CPR training for city employees. Salus University will be at City Hall on April twentieth and twenty-second to provide free eye screenings and free eye glasses. Lastly, the Health Department is in the process of finalizing the ten thousand dollar grant that it has received. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. We're going to go into, move to the swearing-in. Even though the individual that we're swearing, one of the individuals that we're swearing in only has fifty certifications. Like at the United. Before we, before we do that, before we do that, we're going to.
Presentation.
I have our presentation to the Philadelphia Union.
The Philadelphia Union, whereas the Philadelphia Union opened the doors of Subaru Park on June twenty-seventh, twenty-ten. Subaru Park is a state-of-the-art, eighteen thousand five hundred-seat Major League Soccer stadium. Whereas, the Philadelphia Union staff and community representatives have formed a coalition that meets regularly to discuss ways to strengthen the union's communication with the city. The group includes representatives from the Triply Foundation, Chester Upland Soccer, City Team, Everybody Eats Food Pantry, Making a Change Group, Amachi Mentoring Group, Riverfront Alliance of Delaware County, Chester City Hall, and Chester City Parks and Recreation. Whereas, the Chester High School Soccer Team was on a hiatus for about thirty years. The union partnered with Chester Upland School District to create a boys' and girls' soccer program in which the union and other partners provide professional coaching, equipment, and funding. Whereas, they have put in place the IM Project, which is a program that supports more than three hundred and fifty high school students from the Chester Charter Scholars Academy by providing personal, academic, and professional opportunities in partnership with Bimbo Bakeries, Lincoln Financial Group, Global Neurosciences Institute, Newman University, and the Kevin Durant Charity Foundation. Whereas, the Philadelphia Union has supported and sponsored city events like MLK Day, Juneteenth Celebration. Juneteenth Celebration, Adopt a Classroom at Stetzer, Backpack Carnival, Turkey Drives, and more. Whereas they have also hosted events like an Easter egg hunt, Delaware River Festival, Healthy Kids Running Series, and more. Whereas the Philadelphia Union has plans to build a world-class, one hundred and seventy thousand square foot, thirty-two acre sports and recreation complex between Subaru Park and the Union Power Plant Office Building. This fifty-five million-plus-dollar project will develop and revitalize the Chester waterfront. It will also create jobs and tourism in the Chester community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the council members of the City of Chester do hereby thank the Philadelphia Union for their support and partnership in building up the City of Chester presented this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah. Before, before we provide, uh, this key to the city, um, I just want to say to both Tim and, and Dave, um, they have been a great partner and friend to this city from day one. Philadelphia Union has embraced our community and has helped our community grow. When others would say that Chester's not doing this and Chester's not doing that, the Philadelphia Union turns around and invests fifty-five million dollars into a development at the soccer stadium that will help the city continue to grow and like, as was stated, create jobs. Um, this is more than just a partnership. This is a friendship. And we don't give out keys to the city, you know, willy-nillyly, but we give them out to persons and individuals and organizations that truly have the best interests of Chester at heart, and they show it by their actions. So, on behalf of myself and members of council, we want to say thank you, guys, for all that you do here in the City of Chester and, and their champions. They may be the Philadelphia Union, but they are Philadelphia Union located in Chester City.
I just want to share real quickly that it's, uh, interesting that we're giving them a key to the city because they already act like they've had the key to the city. They're in so many areas of our city doing great work, and I, I just want to thank you personally.
And I'll add to that, um, I, I, uh, oftentimes I have a lot of meetings, or in the past I've had a lot of meetings with the Philadelphia Union about different types of, uh, projects, initiatives, and recreational activities that they want to do and tend to do or want to partner with. Uh, and I had a, was reached out to some years ago now, uh, to be a part of the Philadelphia Union Foundation. Uh, and one of the things that was mentioned in the, I guess proclamation, was about the I M Project, a project that, uh, the Philadelphia Union has really put their arm, wrapped their arms around and created, uh, where we've been able to assist, uh, quite a bit, uh, quite amount of, uh, students in the Chester Upland School District, uh, with the charter schools as well, uh, things that has been done as far as, uh, bringing them on college tours, uh, having, uh, courses with them so that they can understand S A T prep and things like that, uh, bringing in speakers, uh, the most recent one was Rich Climen, who was, I believe is the manager of Kevin Durant, who came in and spoke to the students. So they've had their fingerprints on the, the children here, uh, in a positive way to give them exposure and give them the experience that many of our children may not be able to, uh, to see. So I thank you for that, uh, truly deeply, and I'm sure the kids do because I see the smiles on their faces as well. Thank you.
It says. It says, key to the city, is an answer to the Philadelphia Union, through the continued commitment and investment in the City of Chester. Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, City of Chester, on giving this twenty-first day. I don't know if this is, this is the fifth in the board. He got some big vibes, I think, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Wow, this is, this is an incredible honor. Um, we are so privileged and thankful to be here. Uh, can't wait to tell my wife that I got a key to the, to the city. That's fantastic. She barely gives me a key to the door to my house, so, um, I feel like I'm upgrading. Um, but the, uh, the partnership that we have here in Chester is truly, truly special. Um, being able to work with, uh, the mayor and council members, um, Lisa Gaffney, who I know is out here, uh, Mike Galantes, City Engineer, uh, the members of the, um, the first responders, the police, the fire, the E M Ts, that, uh, that really help us build what we're building is so special. And it's a responsibility that we have, that we, um, take serious to be a great partner, um, to put our best foot forward, uh, and to always do what is right, not just for the Philadelphia Union, but for the, for the residents of Chester, for the, the companies in Chester. Um, we are so proud to be here. We're proud to be part of this community, to be part of this family. Um, and just can't thank you enough for believing in us, uh, trusting us, uh, working with us and partnering with us, uh, and collaborating with us in all that we're trying to do and all we're trying to accomplish, uh, in this city. So, um, thank you so much for this, and, uh, it's really an honor and a privilege, uh, to be here and to receive the key, so thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'll take a minute. Uh, as the guy who's been here from the start, it's going to be fifteen years in June, believe it or not, I just want to say thank you. This is a wonderful city. We've embraced it. We're really proud of what we've been able to accomplish, but we got big plans, we got more to come, and it's just, it's all about the people. Um, thank you for all of your support over the years. Look more to, more, more to good stuff going forward. Thank you.
Good morning, and, uh, I want to thank everyone here today. We're overwhelmed, all these folks here today. Uh, on behalf of mayor, council, the entire Chester family, we welcome you here today. Um, we're going to start off with our, uh, promotion to, uh, Deputy Fire Chief. Um, today, as the mayor said, we have a, we have a young man that's going to be promoted today to Deputy Fire Chief, uh, that has been instrumental in keeping this ci, this city safe. Uh, he was, uh, somebody that's been along the ride here for our COVID-nineteen response. He was there every day plugging away, and he has been a, uh, super confidant of mine. Uh, just my right hand, my left hand, I can't say enough about this guy and our staff. Uh, this, this guy goes above and beyond, and, uh, I want to introduce him to you, and that's Battalion Chief John Paul Shirley.
I think he's talking about this guy right here.
Yeah. His wife's going to hold the Bible.
Listen. I.
I.
State your name.
John Paul Shirley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter.
Do my duty as a deputy chief? That, that was my play, though. He, he spell checks everything.
Just go over again.
All right.
I.
I.
State your name.
John Paul Shirley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
Do my duty.
As a deputy chief.
As a deputy chief.
For the City of Chester.
For the City of Chester.
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
To do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
And fellow firefighters.
And fellow firefighters.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens.
To serve the citizens.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Courage.
Courage.
And integrity.
And integrity.
And to hope, and to uphold the laws.
And to uphold the laws.
And constitution.
And constitution.
For the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
State of Pennsylvania.
The State of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
I just want to say, I just want to give you a couple more things about this guy, and I don't want to go on and on, but, uh, uh, my staff and I, and my battalion chief and our executive staff, this guy's been plugged in, and he's, he's, he's anchored this thing our training, uh, and we're going to get to something else here in this, uh, ceremony about some new cadets we're bringing on here, uh, firefighters that we're bringing on here today, and, and, and he's been there right along the way for our emergency management, uh, our hazmat team that we participated with in Delaware County, our special operations group, and, and, and it's a real, uh, it's a great thing for this department. Today's a great day, and, um, this training piece is, uh, these ten cadets that are going to be sworn in today, he did the last class, and he, you know, worked with my battalion chief, who I'm going to introduce to you, uh, that put these ten kids through. And this department, help me out, I don't want to make this mistake, but I believe we're about forty-some folks, men and women, with less than six years on the job, less than seven years on the job. So, uh, it's really critical, peace, that our senior members are, are bringing these guys along, and Chief Shirley's done a great job doing that today. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy to say that this entire team, the union, local fourteen hundred, and executive staff, and all the members of the department are behind Chief Shirley today, and, um, I'll turn it over to you, chief.
Thank you, chief. I, I would just like to say, I'm, I'm truly humbled by, uh, all of the words, uh, that, that have been spoken so far. It's, uh, um, very overwhelming. Um, uh, first and foremost, uh, I'd like to thank Commissioner Rigby, uh, mayor, council, um, the Fire Department has always had good fire commissioners, but, uh, I don't think you picked a better leader than Commissioner Rigby. And what, uh, what he's done over the, the, the last couple of years is, is, uh, nothing short of amazing, and I, I think we owe him a round of applause. Mayor, Mayor Kirkland, uh, Councilman Williams, Councilman Morgan, Public Safety Director Roots, um, I, I'd just like to thank you guys for this opportunity, and I promise not to let you down. Like I said, I'm working on number fifty, certification number fifty-one.
And, and the last thing, we definitely, the most important, we thank you guys right here at the family. She already knows about my, uh, what times of phone calls.
Forty-five a.m.
Forty-five a.m. So, uh, thank you for what you do, and thank you for giving J P to the City of Chester. We appreciate you.
I, I'd also like to thank, I know he's in the, the back room over there, C O L Legger. Um, I've, I've spoke, spoken to him a handful of times, but, uh, he, he coming up. C O L, now I just want to say, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity as well, but I know we've only spoken a couple of times, but you, you, you have inspired me as a leader. I look forward to working with you. Um, uh, to, to the men and women of the Chester Bureau of Fire, uh, you guys actually deserve all the credit in the world. You guys are the ones out there on the front line getting it done, and anything I can do to support you guys in this new role, uh, I look forward to doing that. Um, to the residents of the City of Chester, one of the greatest honors of my life has been to serve you guys as a firefighter. I look forward to doing that in a new role. Um, to, uh, my, uh, my parents, um, I want to be where I'm, or actually, I want to be who I am today if I were you, so I thank you guys for that. To, uh, my family and friends, some of my closest friends here in the room, uh, I want to be who I am today, or where I'm at today, if I ever see myself. Want to be where I'm at today if I'm working here, and, um, bless my lovely, my beautiful wife, Elizabeth, she's, uh, she's my foundation, and, uh, couldn't have picked a better partner to do it through life, so, thank you for that. Yeah, without further ado, let's, let's move the show on.
Thank you. The chief, you might as well, stay right up front there if you would. And our next, uh, our next thing, we'll get these, uh, promotions out of the way before we get to the main event, right? Uh, the most of you are here for today, but, uh, the next, uh, firefighter I want to introduce is, uh, firefighter Michael Gaffney, and his promotion today to fire captain here in the City of Chester. Um, Mike, if you could come on up. And, and just to say, uh, just say a few words about, uh, Captain Gaffney. Uh, Captain Gaffney, uh, came on the job here close to six years ago, seven years ago today, uh, he would, and he's advanced quickly, you know, you, you can't be eligible for this role until five years into the job, and I watched Mike come in the job, and, uh, and I was like, ah, you know, but I'll tell you what, this guy turned, this guy turned a corner, and, 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 and with the leadership he has shown in this department in the last couple of years is incredible, and, and, and he's a, he, he's a guy that everybody wants on their platoon, and, uh, he's been serving the role as an acting captain for the last three or four months, and, and, and we thank you for that, and I, I'm glad I had the opportunity today to make this official because you've done an outstanding job, and I look forward to working with you further. And without further ado, we'll do the swearing-in. Yeah, I, I, I totally forgot my notes here, but I probably, probably won't find it if I make all the notes, and I, and I'll go by it. But, uh, so Mike is a little, has a real special spot with myself and a lot of the department because of his father, and he's here today, Mike Captain, and, uh, he was our Public Safety Director, Emergency Management, he was the guy at Wyndham University, uh, a big friend of the department, the police department, and the entire City of Chester, and it's real special for me to do this today, and, uh, we thank you, Mike, for your service. He's retired, heading to the shore now, and, uh, but we certainly do miss him, uh, at Wyndham University, but we have your son here today, and we thank you for that. Okay, I state your name.
I, Michael Gaffney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As a fire captain.
As a fire captain.
For the City of Chester Fire Department.
For the City of Chester Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
And fellow firefighters.
And fellow firefighters.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the City of Chester.
To serve the citizens of the City of Chester.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The State of Pennsylvania.
The State of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Uh, so I have to thank, uh, first of all, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Rigby, who is the deputy chief here. Um, I wouldn't be here without any of you guys. Obviously, they, uh, they love to be in this role, and, uh, I don't say that lightly. I have to thank my, my family, my parents, my fathers here that you see, uh, my mom, both my stepparents are amazing people. And then, um, my son and my wife, Kelsey. Uh, without them, I wouldn't be able to do what I do. And then, uh, lastly, I'd like to thank, and, uh, all you guys that I respect you and, uh, can't wait to work with you in this role.
Okay, so here we are. Now, now, now we're ready for the big show. Now that we got the, uh, I guess the bosses out of the way, right? Everybody came here to, uh, see this. Again, uh, we thank you for being here today, the, the family, because you are the, you know, you're, you're, you're the support system for these guys and girls. And today we, we have ten new cadets, or ten new firefighters, I keep getting slipping up there, with ten new firefighters to swear in. And I'd like to bring those forward. And with, uh, Battalion Chief, uh, Matt Hand, who has been the lead instructor for the city of Chester. If they could all come up. So, s- so at this time, uh, just real briefly to go back, and, and there's some folks that we need to thank here today. Uh, again, we need to thank Mayor and Council, uh, COO Leiner, uh, who has been a, uh, a, a big part of, um, this somewhat of a reorganization and, and that he has came in here and been, uh, uh, super, super positive about the fire service. And, and he really gets it. So we thank you again there, Chief Leiner. I need to make sure, uh, that I, that also go down all the way to our civil service, uh, our city clerk Candace. So that's where the process starts. Uh, she made this happen, got this list going, and, uh, a million phone calls and a million, lots of work down there, uh, to get these ten, ten folks here today. There's two other, uh, gentlemen in the room that I need to introduce, and, and that, that would be, uh, Chief Pryor, uh, Wilmington Fire Department. We'd like to ask if you could come up, as well as Captain Marcel from the Wilmington Fire Department, please. Thank you. So I definitely met our, our, uh, occupancy load here, so I better be, keep moving along here. But, uh, so just to give you the quick backstory here, this, this cadet class was very unique in saying that, uh, was the first time we actually, um, in a long time, I, I can't say that, the first time in a long time that we've, the Chester Bureau of Fire has participated in the training process. Uh, we partnered with Wilmington going back about three years ago, and our last cadet ca- class came through there. And it was a really great experience. It's formed a great partnership with the city of Wilmington. And, um, I, it's something that I look forward to keep moving forward. And, and they've done a great job. This time, we, we approached it a little differently. We assigned our chief of training, which was Battalion Chief Hand, to, um, do the EMT portion, our, our, our medical portion, uh, up here at home. Uh, and I'd like to thank the Delaware County Training Center for, uh, helping us along the way with that. And we partnered with, uh, GFAC, which is, good fellowship, my right hand, I got him here. Good fellowship, and, and they helped provide us with this EMT program. And, uh, Chief Hand and, uh, his team of, I'm going to name some firefighters from my department. Firefighter Fridley, firefighter Polk, firefighter Church, firefighter Anding, Captain Quinn, Captain Curry, firefighter Delva, firefighter McFawn, firefighter Rutledge, and Captain Amy Denoy. Those firefighters and fire captains assisted in the first half of this program. And they PT'd every morning at the Delaware County Training Center, and they really got after it. And, um, it, it, it was something that, you know, I went down there the first day and I'm like, a little apprehensive, right? I show up the first day, these guys are, they got them all on, like they did it before, right? Uh, but it, we plugged these guys in, they stepped up, and, and, and it was a great experience. And my hats off to that, the, the team that went down there, uh, Chief Hand. And, uh, of course, our partners were Wilmington. So we did the first portion here, uh, then we did our fire portion, and we sent our cadets down to, uh, Wilmington to do that part. And, you know, we all worked together in our final burn. It was really a neat time. Myself, some of the chiefs even got in there and, and got to put the air packs on and do, and, and get back in there and do the job. So it was a great experience. And, um, I just wanted to make sure I thanked everybody because, uh, it was, it was a big undertaking. Um, at this point, I'd like to introduce our cadets. And if they could just take one step forward, and then, and then we'll go from there. Firefighter Joshua Mason. Uh, firefighter Joshua Hall. Joseph Hall, my apologies. Firefighter April Zavilla. Firefighter Phoenix Murray. Firefighter Ryan Bax. Firefighter Zachary Felker. Firefighter Kenneth Baker. Firefighter Mark Randolph. Firef- firefighter Eric Colberg. And firefighter Christopher Zuccarelli. So before we swear them in, I just want to give you a couple of quick highlights from the academy. And we need to, uh, recognize a couple of these firefighters. Firefighter Joseph Hall, could you take one step forward? Firefighter Joseph Hall was voted the class leader for the 2023 recruit class by his fellow classmates. And had, had the highest academic score among the Chester cadets for firefighting with a score of ninety-four percent. Firefighter Christopher Zuccarelli, take a step forward, of course. Firefighter Zuccarelli achieved the highest academic percentage in the EMS portion of the class with an overall score of ninety-one percent. And I'd like to recognize April Zavilla.
So without taking anything away from the first two guys, if you got to put it all together, she was the top.
And I'd like to say that she, uh, firefighter Zuccar- uh, excuse me, firefighter Zavilla is our fifth female firefighter for the city of Chester. I'm almost done. So, um, a couple of things, like the mayor hit on, uh, earlier when he introduced everybody about the, uh, you know, the nepotism or thing, you know, and, and I, I'm a traditional guy. So, uh, I want to recognize firefighter Murray. So firefighter Murray is second generation firefighter here in the city of Chester. Father is in the back, Fire Battalion Chief John Le. And that's something that we've been super proud of over the years, father, son, two, three generations. I mean, we got guys right here now that are grandsons of our charter members. So, uh, thank you, Mayor, for, uh, recognizing us earlier. And, um, that's a real good tradition. We want to keep moving with it. Uh, I want to recognize some of our, I, I want to thank all the first responders that are here today. I know the families run deep with that, and I thank you all for being here today. I do want to recognize firefighter Hall's father, retired Battalion Chief James Hall of the Trenton Fire Department. And of course, I need to recognize my brothers and sisters from the Upper Arby Fire Department, who we work very closely with. And we have two, two of our firefighters here today that have deep roots in Upper Arby Township. And they are firefighter Kenneth Baker and firefighter Mark Randolph. Uh, firefighter Randolph's father is a captain for the Upper Arby Fire Department. And firefighter Baker's father is retired captain, Michael Baker, of the Upper Arby Fire Department. Thank you. And at this point, again, uh, no further ado, we're going to have the, uh, deputy chief here swear them in. I think that would be fitting. And, uh, again, I thank the city, uh, the entire team, the COO, and everybody here in Chester for the support of this department. Uh, we've had some troubled times here, but there's been an ongoing support of this fire department that I can't say enough about. And we continue to turn the corner and make this a better place. So I thank you all for being here today. And chief, if you would do the honors.
Yes, sir. It's right here. Yes.
As you all raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Michael Gaffney.
Do solemnly swear to do my duty.
Do solemnly swear to do my duty.
As a firefighter for the city of Chester Fire Department.
As a firefighter for the city of Chester Fire Department.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Serve my commanding officers and fellow firefighters.
Serve my commanding officers and fellow firefighters.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
Serve the citizens of the city of Chester.
Serve the citizens of the city of Chester.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions.
To uphold the laws and constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Pennsylvania.
The state of Pennsylvania.
The charter of the city, the charter of the city of Chester.
Charter of the city of Chester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'd like to say good morning. I couldn't leave this room unless I told this story. This young lady had applied for being a firefighter approximately ten years ago. When her application came across our desk and I, and I read it and everything, I was like, you can't, you was here before? And she said, yeah. But they wanted to hire her because she was a lady. So I just want the young people and everyone to know that dreams do come true. Well, sometimes we have to wait a while, but your time will come. And this is proof. Right here in the city of Chester, this young lady waited and her time came. So I'd like, again, I would just like to say thank the city of Chester, and thanks firefighter Miss April for being one of our firefighters in the city of Chester.
So, one more last thing. So, Mr. Hall is, you know, I got to recognize him two, three times. Now he's going to, now he's going to talk. But anyway, no. So the class leader, uh, firefighter Hall, would like to have a few comments for the, for the, for everyone.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So, I'm doing a speech, which I don't care for, but used to being from, from a public. But first off, I want to thank my family, my loved ones, my closest friends who are here to support me. My family supported me through this. Mayor and council, all of you have done to get me through. And my newfound brothers and sisters of this department, city of Chester. But today isn't about me. Today is about the nine other individuals in this room. Who, for whatever reason, they elected me to be their leader. Thanks, Chris. But for whatever reason, we're here. And, uh, I can't thank them enough for what they've done. Through every blood, sweat, and tear, and trust me, there's been blood, sweat, and tears through this whole thing. They've been behind my side, and I've been behind theirs. And, uh, I will forever be tied to this group. These nine individuals will be the twenty-third recruit academy of Chester, Chester. Thank you, everyone.
And I think Mr. Hall has one more thing he's going to do tomorrow is, uh, make sure he stays ahead of Battalion Chief Hand on the ten-mile run tomorrow as they finish their last day in the academy. So I think Chief Hand will have to get up early. And at this point, I'd like to introduce our Director of Public Safety, uh, Councilman Roots. He'd like to say.
Good morning, all. Wow. I love these events. This is really, this puts a smile on our face. The people who are up front, the families and the entire community. I spent a little time with this crew yesterday, about an hour. Uh, meeting them, talking to them, telling them that they put their, uh, left hand on the Bible, so they didn't have to do that today. So you got a break. But the one thing that really stood out with my conversation with, with this group is a question I asked, like, why, 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 why did you come to Chester? Why the Chester Fire Department? And through and through, the answer was consistent. It was because, I guess, like that old Temple University commercial, we could have chose anywhere, but we chose Temple. Uh, they all said Chester's the best. We could have gone anywhere, but we knew that Chester has what it takes to really launch a career. And that's just testament to the years of, of just great leadership, a great organization that the Chester Fire Department has, not just in Chester, but in the county and in the state. And I'll have to say outside the state because a few of the cadets, uh, found us from outside the state. So that's really amazing. So, since I stole your thunder for what you shared with us yesterday, I also said to be prepared to just say a few words to the community. So I guess in the order that you're standing, just come up one at a time, introduce yourself, and be that public speaker that you really are.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Eric Colberg. Um, just want to, uh, thank you guys for the opportunity. Uh, this has been a dream of mine for a while. Um, thank you to the mayor, the city, the commissioner, uh, the chiefs, the firefighters. Thank you to the mayor, the city, the commissioner, uh, the chiefs, the firefighters, uh, the PT instructors who made us cry every day. But uh, yeah, I'm just grateful for the opportunity and uh, looking forward to serving. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Zach Felger. Uh, just like to thank the council, uh, the mayor, as well as the fire department and the leadership for uh, helping us get through this process. Again, thank the PT instructors for, uh, he wasn't wrong, literally making us cry on a daily. Um, and I'd like to thank my friends and family for coming out. Uh, you guys were amazing. Uh, deuce as well.
Good morning, uh, my name's Ryan Vax. Keep this short, I'd like to thank my parents for supporting me. Uh, the mayor and council for this opportunity, also commissioner Rigby, uh, the whole department. I'm very lucky to be here today and I really feel surreal to be here right now to drink on the trip. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Mark Randolph. Uh, I want to say thank you to my family and my friends for all the support through the entire academy. I want to thank uh, city and council and the fire department for bringing me on and showing support through the whole, whole process. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Grealy. I just want to thank mayor and council for, and the fire commissioner for believing in me to be a fireman. And what everyone else said with the thanking the PT instructors and the fire department itself, uh, they did make us cry and sweat a lot, so thank you guys for that and thank you for the 30 pounds I lost. Uh, and thank you for my family, they dealt with me a lot in the last five months, so thank you to them and thank you, everyone.
Uh, my name's Joshua Mason. Uh, first want to thank God, obviously, uh, he put me through everything. Uh, mayor and council, thank you guys so much. Uh, commissioner Rigby, I appreciate it a lot. Uh, Tina and Kelly from GFAC, you guys got me through EMT, I never thought I'd be able to do it. And uh, yeah, the rest of my family and friends, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, hello, good morning, Phoenix Murray. Um, just want to start off saying thank you to the council and the mayor, uh, the commissioner. And um, just want to thank my family uh, for the support. Thank you.
Name's uh, Kenneth Baker. I just want to thank uh, the mayor, city council, commissioner Rigby, and the entire fire department for this opportunity. And my family for inspiring me. Thank you.
April Zavala, um, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. I'm extremely humbled and grateful to be standing here today. I'd like to thank the, the, I'd like to thank council, commissioner Rigby, and the mayor for taking a chance on me. You won't regret it. Um, I'd like to thank the command staff of Chester, all the instructors in Wilmington, um, for all their help and guidance. Um, and I look forward to serving the community of Chester. Thank you.
At that point, that brings us to close and I know I forgot somebody. But, when I mentioned GFAC, uh, I didn't realize you ladies were here today. And Tina Kelly, thank you. Um, I will tell you guys that EMS has been a stroke for us, as with the cadets. And these, these ladies told me, when I contacted them, the commish, they're gonna pass. When they're done with us, they're gonna pass. And they were right. And I, and this is the first time we had 100% here on, here on swearing in day. And I'm proud to say it's to you ladies there in the audience and thank you. The city thanks you. And I think the commissioner, my uh, partner in the police department probably is ready to kill me, so uh, I think he has someone he needs to get sworn in. So uh, at this point, thank you again and uh, stay safe and thank you for being here today.
This was, this was real nice. And these guys and ladies talked about being uh, going through uh, blood, sweat, and tears. But it was, you didn't see what I saw up here. Those, those senior members of the firefighters who were in the room watching their, and we ask, if you're gonna exit, please exit quietly. Watching their, watching their siblings being sworn in. It's nothing like watching grown men trying to hold back tears. Tears of joy. Once again, if you're going to uh, address council, we ask that you would sign in, please.
I thought he had a, I thought he had a cadet. Okay.
Yeah. You swearing cadets?
You don't swear cadets.
Commissioner Rigby tried to steal the show.
I don't know. Yeah, I think he do. You know, they try to get street ready.
I know, that's it. My back hurt.
Yeah, great difference. He means well.
Once again, once again, if you're going to address mayor and council, please sign your name and your address at the podium. Oh, it is. Okay. No. You signing in? I already said it nine times, but here, go ahead. Hey Mike, you're a city hall. Ken, great, Eric. Thank you, sir.
You didn't even know my address.
Why not? That's what I asked.
What the purpose?
Need to make sure you live in Chester, Mr. Brown.
Yes, you know I live in Chester.
Mr. Brown, could you put your, and Ms. Littleton, could you put your address? Ms. Littleton, could you put your address on there as well? Please. Ms. Littleton?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I just had a quick, a couple of follow-ups um, to a couple of the issues that we brought before council before. Um, and also spoke to the school board about this. There are a couple abandoned homes uh, that are really decapitated across from our educational institute where our children go to get educated. Um, and someone asked me a question, so I want to ask a question, but I wanted to continue to put that before council to see uh, what's going to be done about those houses. Um, it, it really doesn't look good for our children to have to witness and see that every day, sitting across from the educational institute. Um, a person just randomly came by my house to ask me about those properties. I don't know what uh, the purpose was, but are abandoned houses and buildings in the city of Chester, this is a question. If they're, if the property taxes are being paid on, on them, if that is the case, is that why some of these buildings are able to just remain uh, in the condition they are? Or is there a plan from the city to start dealing with some of these abandoned properties and buildings that are really becoming or has been for years a eyesore to the city and the image of the city? So that's the question I wanted to ask and just continue to put it before council. And with the school board about those, those houses. Um, there has been times where people have actually been in those houses. Um, and it's, it's just not a, a, a good situation. So we just want to see if that's gonna be addressed. They've been there for a very, very long time. Um, also, so that's my, my first question. Um, and also uh, abandoned cars. Um, there's been a vehicle that's been sitting in front of my house since about November. I've called in several times, finally got through to the commissioners and just wanted to see what the, the turnaround time is with that. It's actually sitting outside, kind of sticking out in traffic, which is kind of causing some issues sometimes when the traffic gets really heavy. And so that car has been abandoned. No one, pretty much in the community knows whose car it is. Um, hopefully somebody is safe, so I did, did give the um, um, license plate, so I wanted to see what is the turnaround time to deal with something like that. Okay?
Mr. Galati, you want to speak to the abandoned homes issue?
And then I, just one more thing I just want to ask and then I can, um, I'm, I'm, I'm still just concerned about a lot of the, the dumping, uh, dumping sites that are still really visible here in the city. I, I think you mentioned about uh, someone had recently um, got caught with that. Is it, I don't know if you talked to the fact of, was it inside or outside dumping? If you can, not to really know who it is and what type of consequences uh, were given uh, to people that are doing that illegal dumping. And furthermore, what is a continued plan to clean up more of this illegal dumping sites that are still here, visible in the city? Thank you.
Just to give council a brief update, I know we get a lot of complaints about uh, houses that are dilapidated, falling down. Uh, we've been working with the county. I just resubmitted our demolition application to them with a priority list. Uh, unfortunately, the houses you mentioned across on Ninth Street that you're talking about, were not on that list. These were from a prior list. So what I could do is get the addresses off. Uh, if, if you want to submit the addresses in, I can, I can get them, work with LNI. We can work to try to get them on the demolition list if it's something that, um, you know, if they're, if they're truly in poor condition. I'm not aware of the houses you're talking about, but the ones that I'm talking about are houses like, for example, there's two houses on Rose Street that actually fell into the street that are, have been submitted to the county uh, to request funding, so.
I'll get out and take, yeah, let's, I'll, 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 I'll talk to you after the meeting, we'll, we'll take a look at them. All right, thanks. All right, are those the properties directly across the street from the high school? Okay. Um, and, and to add to that, I'm not sure of the addresses. I'll have to look to see if they're current on our taxes or if they have some type of payments plan set up with Delaware County. Um, of, of course, we don't want a property, well, no, we want a property on a pair of taxes, but we want them to, the upkeep of the, of the property, whether it's highways and grass, the structure of the properties as well. I will say that we are looking to, we are working on some, some ordinances and legislation to hopefully be able to mitigate that in the future. Uh, we, we're doing some assessments with the uh, the code enforcement and LNI and looking at some other municipalities and cities to see what laws that they've uh, enacted to uh, decrease the amount of time uh, that a property can stay vacant and/or, I guess blighted to a community uh, like those have been for some, before a few years as well. So I hope that we can, hopefully this, by the, by this year, we're gonna uh, be able to enact something like that and, and, and maybe we'll be able to start uh, checking off those boxes and, and decrease the amounts of blighted properties in the neighborhood. Not anything that's outside of our normal ordinances for public safety and code enforcement at LNI, reaching out to the property owners and citing those property owners uh, on a, as, I guess, as needed basis. Um, as far as if they're current, I really don't know. I have to check the records to see if they're current on taxes or if they're going through the process for sheriff's repository lists and things like that that goes out through the, the county's hands. So I'm not sure if that, that, but I'm sure uh, public safety in that department uh, are, ha, or in the past. I'm not, I'm not saying, sure how recent, but I'm sure in the past that they probably cited those properties uh, for the way they, they've looked, uh, going up, been eyesore within the community. But we have to, we have to put something together uh, to strengthen uh, some of the laws that we have here in the city with that, to deal with that. No, there's ordinances in place, but we probably have to do some things to strengthen them. So that's not my department. I can't say exactly the actual process and procedures. I do know that, I'm sure that the uh, inspectors at some point probably has taken uh, some action uh, on those uh, and our properties in our area. Commissioner, you want to speak on the abandoned car issue?
Sure.
Process. Commissioner, you also want to speak on the uh, the arrests made and what we do with those persons who were arrested for dumping in the community?
That's correct. Uh, in reference to illegal dumping uh, of the task force uh, and district attorney's office under Chester Park.
Commissioner, can you go speak to the microphone?
In reference to the legal dumping, uh, we have a task force now. We have LNI from the city of Chester, the district attorney's office, CID, and myself. And I don't want to give the playbook and make this notable, but we have portable cameras and we put it on our Facebook page and we actually made our first arrest.
Thank you, commissioner. And we also, we also in the process of our workers, our streets workers are in the process of uh, cleaning up uh, as many abandoned, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, cleaning up as many dump sites as possible. Um, but we're also asking the community if they will be vigilant when it comes to looking out because as fast as we clean them up, if there's not a camera there, they're right back dumping and, and they're not dumping at night now, they're dumping in the daytime. So we, we definitely need the help of our, our residents as well.
So in reference to the, in reference to the arrest, there's the due process and a lot of it comes on the judges, which are the fines, the uh, taking the person's vehicle, but it all depends through the court system. All right? But I'll get you some literature on it.
My last thing, Ms. Littleton. Uh, a member of LNI will speak to you before you leave about their me inquiries that they have, so just so you can be aware of that. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Happy new years to y'all.
Happy new year.
I ain't see y'all, some of y'all is here. I stopped by today in the behalf of where Chester is. Don't make no sense. I've been here for 57 years. And Chester was, it's like a bowl of health when I come around here. Chester had it going on. You could go anywhere and get a job. Today, these young black boys will have a chance. It's a shame. Y'all know they was in trouble when they come to Chester. You go right down there, that that bull down there. Everybody from Delaware, Jersey, and different places coming out. It's a disgrace in a bedamned black city. And we got to pay for everything. Delco, we was paying for stormwater. I get a bill the other day. I ain't paid nothing yet because I paid for Delco. I want to know from you as the mayor, do we have to pay for storm soot plus Delco? Because that rain water, you can't stop that from coming on your house. If you do, I want you to come there and put some, a shelf over my house where it don't rain on my house. Because I don't need no rain. That stuff started in Maryland. Come from from down Texas to Maryland. They tried in Virginia, them people wouldn't work for us. If any storm painting, Brooklyn painting, Aston painting, really painting, I don't mind painting. But why Chester? The poorest city in the country.
Well, Mr. Mr. Brown, first of all, I think some of your facts are incorrect.
What you mean?
Chester is not the poorest city city in the country. That's number one.
Who is, who is for?
Let me finish, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Listen, I listen to you.
Jersey, Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you. That's that's number one. Um number two, we are not, we don't have a Sunship anymore. We don't have a Ford Motor Company anymore. We would love to have those companies and businesses here like that, but we simply don't have them. Our young black men have opportunities here in this city for employment. There's going to be a great opportunity down at the uh soccer stadium, fifty-five million dollar investment. Somebody has to come in and help build that facility. And if we're qualified, and we should be, you saw today all these firefighters being sworn in. And we have police officers that are going to be sworn in. We plead with our residents to come after those career opportunities. Plead with them. So to say that there's nothing for them to do and they they can't get these opportunities, these jobs, that's incorrect, Mr. Brown. Let me finish, let me finish.
Hey, go ahead.
So
I ain't got no more time.
Me neither. So to say um that those opportunities aren't there, they're there. We've been hiring right here in the city. Right here in the city. And so we ask our young men, whether they're black, white, brown, or indifferent, and wi- and women, to apply. We fight every day for Chester residents to apply and get jobs within this city government. That's all it takes is to have the skill set to do the job. And so if 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 residents choose not to come and choose not to work, that is not the fault of this government. That is the fault of the individual. And so we welcome those oppo- we welcome those persons coming to the city and saying, you know what? I want to be a police officer. I want to be a firefighter. I want to work in city government. I want to go down to soccer stadium and and show them my worth. I want to go down to Harris and show them my worth. There are opportunities that are here. I want to go to Silver Care Health Services and show them my worth. And so those opportunities are there, Mr. Brown. They just got to, they got to
Well, the reason why I'm saying that, if they get caught on the street with a little reef or something in their pocket, the first thing you gotta tell them, you got a background from there. They're not going to hire you. You know it and I know it.
That's not true, Mr. Brown.
But who you hiring with 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 a background record?
I can't tell you that. I'm not going to tell you that, but we, let me tell you
But if you so, I'll bring twenty-five over me at tomorrow. Is you gonna put them to work?
Mr. Brown?
I said, is you gonna put them to work? Yes or no?
No.
Well, what's that for that? And let me know right now. You don't need to bring them. Because I know a lot of kids that play ball with me.
Mr. Brown?
I can bring them to work.
Mr. Brown?
And we'll work.
Mr. Brown? If we had twenty-five jobs that are available here in city government and they qualify for those positions, we put them to work. But I tell you, no, because we don't have twenty-five.
You should have more than that.
Yeah, okay.
Wait a minute now, I ain't finished with you.
Yes, you are.
No, it's the reason why I'm saying this because right in front of my house, if I don't clean off them drains, who will clean them off?
Oh, let me, let me, let me talk to you about
I clean the drain off every day.
Let me tell you, let me say
Man, I got to go back home now and clean them off. Because when when them fellows come there with that thing, they bring a dustpan and a street broom, a house broom. How the hell you was leaning a a street with with a house broom and a dustpan and a and a and a five gallon water bucket? Because you know better than that.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown? There are numerous in every community in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There are stormwater authorities throughout Pennsylvania. It's not Chester, it's Chester.
Well, I ain't seen nobody, I asked a lot of them
They're not only in Chester, they're in other states.
I know where that
Stormwater, stormwater
In Maryland, I know that, been there.
But you just said
Been there when I leave Washington.
But you just said that it was only
I said Maryland.
No, you said Chester.
I said Chester up this way in Delaware County, that's when I know painting.
Okay. Well, the stormwater authority has been, was established by way of state legislature. And it was established so that we would be able to alleviate some flooding within our communities. And I know there was a ton of flooding in the city of Chester prior
Still is.
Thank you.
Wait a minute now.
I've been
Now, I ain't got nothing to do how long you been here. I just get you. Because you had to be up talking over, we when we supposed to have a meeting for the for the residents. Now, let me ask you something else. Like down there by where I live at now, they done fellas stripping out all them old houses and throwing it out in the backyard, rats running everywhere. Looked like to me, I went down to Delaware and checked with that last week. When them people put out a sheriff's sale house or any kind of house, they make them people put a dumpster in front of it where they stripping out. If you don't clean up with the dumps and go, hell, that trash all in street, go, come down to my house right now and I assure you, tutor, house full of trash on the porch, twenty-six but twenty-six, twenty. Porch right now, full of trash, bed and everything, lay it, lay it out in the front yard. How that look when you walk out the door? Twenty-six thirty, thirty on the corner, Eighth Street. That backyard is full of trash. All up that high, right now. You go down, I'm my house, there's trash everywhere. That field back there by Bull Log Top, bag replaced, full of the trash. And another thing, these guys don't want to pick up certain trash because they say they own a lot, they pick up one piece a week. If you put a bedroom set out there, a dresser set, it'll take you four weeks to get that all F in the front of your house. It don't make sense. Looked like to me, if you're there, you should load the truck up. That's the only common sense. And another thing I'd like to ask you. Now, I I I talked with a few children this week. I call them children because they're young, way younger men, and that's what I care. When the police stopped them and tore their car to eye corner or somewhere, why the next day they gonna charge them children five and six hundred dollars? Looked like to me, y'all should put that torn plate back down here on Dock Street when I come to Chester. Right down there by the, the way back in the back that the day, where you can make that money for the city. Why go to eye corner all that money?
Mr. Brown? They do not charge five, see, they do not charge five and six hundred dollars for a day. That's not true.
How much they charge?
Mr. Brown?
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta cut it, shoot, how much they charge?
Mr. Brown?
I know it ain't under, ain't under three hundred. Because I went up there and get a young girl a car about two weeks ago up there. And I gave him over three hundred dollars. Because Glockway dead now, so he just, he can't cut you no slack. He going on, Charles, he going on. From Brooklyn, he can't cut you no slack. See, I know who can cut the slack and who can't cut slack. I've been here a long time in this city. And another thing
It's the last thing, Mr. Brown.
About three weeks ago, might be a little longer than that. Some guy come there, I was sitting on the porch. And shoot my damn window with a gun. And jump up and run around the corner and jump in a blue car and went down through the alley. Them brothers come there and laugh. Like it's a joke. Ain't no joke, I could have been getting killed. Sitting on my own porch relaxing. It's a shame. It's a shame. And ain't nothing mean nothing. They ain't much to come back. Now, if I've been in Philadelphia, Delaware, the department would have come there and fixed my house. Fixed that window back up. Yeah, they do it in Delaware. Y'all supposed to have fixed my window.